I just want to say first why Mayor Ball wouldn't be here. He's going to have surgery tomorrow. He's got some issues. They're supposed to do some pre-op stuff on him this afternoon, so he thought the best maybe not get out tonight.
Okay, we've already called the meeting. The order, roll call. Justina?
Mayor Connie Ball. Vice Mayor Mike Profit.
Here.
Alderman Jeff Fancher.
Here.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Here.
Alderman Bobby Knight.
Here.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Here.
City Attorney Terry Hurst.
Here.
City Administrator James Fincham.
Here.
Okay, the next one has approval of the minutes. Did I hear anybody make a motion with approval of minutes of last meeting and make any questions about it?
I made a motion for it.
All the motions been made?
Second.
Both been made in second. Okay, all in favor?
Uh.
Okay, I just got it. We're moving on. Okay, I don't think we've got any proclamations or recognitions as citizens. I don't, I'm not aware of any. I just wanted to tell the department heads, I tell them this every month, thank you so much for all you do because you'd have to be around to see what goes on. I want all your department heads relay that to your people, the good job you've done. All right, Ms. Sandy Burchett?
Well, I'm going to start and then Jan Smith, our board chair, will come up and end. As you know, I came previously last year to just tell you the need of Newport Grammar School about our roof. And you graciously voted to make this become a reality. And I just want to tell you that it's completed and the teachers are so delighted because now they don't have to be in rooms where the water's coming down through the ceiling because we had had it patched several times. So we just wanted to say, I know some more of our board members and administrators and teachers are here also, to just let you know how much we do appreciate it. Because we do not come and ask for money all the time, believe it or not. We've tried to live within the budget and so you're appreciated and you're welcome to come up and we'll treat you to lunch, cafeteria meal one day if you would like to.
I had eight years of it, thank you.
No, but I'm going to turn it over to Jan. But I really appreciate your support and it shows that you're vested in the students of Newport Grammar School, the children of Newport, and they are our future.
Sandy, I want to tell you all thank you too. I saw where you'd written something in the paper about fame because sometimes this is sort of a thankless job, you know, damn if you're doing it, damn if you don't. So it makes you feel good, you know, when you put roof on your city hall, put roofs on your fire department, you know, all this year neglect it catches up when you can't have a school or city hall running around placing five gallon buckets all over there that didn't have people to come in and look at your place. So we appreciate your thought.
Well, we are very, very happy, is all I can tell you.
We're, we're.
Thank you so much.
Again, guys, I do know that this, your job is a thankless job for the most part. People want to hunt you down when it's, when they've got something to gripe about. So that's why we as a board, Mickey's here and it's here, Mike couldn't be here, but and our administrators, we're here just to really, to say thank you and we appreciate you taking interest in our building. You know, it is one of the historic buildings and we've been here for a long time and it's a key part of Newport and we do appreciate it. So thank you for your assistance.
Thank you all for both kind words. Thank you all. Okay, the next thing on the agenda is communication. The city administrator?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. The only thing I have this time is it's, once again, we're planning the rhythm on the River Concert Series for this year and got a call from the Chamber yesterday and they just wanted to verify the dates for this year so they can get ready, begin scheduling acts for this summer. Last year we had five concerts. This year we'll only have four because we do it every other Thursday starting in June. And the way that it fell last year, there were five Thursdays between the first of June and the end of July. And this year there's only four. And those dates are June the 7th and 19th and July the 5th and 19th. So I just wanted to make you aware, we are doing that again this year. We feel like it's been a great success. Had a lot of good comments about it. The crowds have gotten bigger each year and it's something, I think it's been a good project between us partnering with the Chamber and of course the other supporters that give money to the Chamber to help make it happen. But I just want to make you all aware of that. We are going to start moving forward with that after this, tonight, announcing it tonight so she can begin booking acts. That's all I have, but Gary has something. I'm going to turn it over to him. He has a request for you.
Thank you, Mr. Fincham. You have a copy of Resolution 2018-02 in your folder. This is the same thing pretty much as the resolution that we voted for and passed in 2016, showing support for the Tennessee Downtowns program. We intend to apply once again. This is a formality. We voted unanimously last time to approve it and I need to ask you gentlemen because I thought we could rest on the previous resolution. I was told that it would be best to pass a new one. So I would like to ask you gentlemen to suspend the rules, add this to the agenda so that we can be timely in our application. It is due the 1st of March.
Appreciate your job. You're done, Gary.
So, Mr. Vice Mayor, we need a motion to suspend the rules.
I'd make a motion to suspend the rules to add this to the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh.
Uh.
Thank you.
Do you want to do the other thing now or is that later on?
It's on, yeah, it's later.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Get it a little later on.
Okay.
Okay, the next thing on our consideration of appointment of the board is Mr. Thornton here. Anyway, he showed an effort, he wanted to be reappointed and I make the nomination, we reappointed him. There wasn't anybody else running him. I hear a second?
Yes.
Okay, we need a roll call or just, okay, all out, all, anybody not in favor?
I was having it.
Okay, next we've got Tanner Preservation Alliance. I saw Carleen somewhere. Okay. Is there any old business or unfinished business? Okay, the next on the discussion about the audit report for fiscal year 2016 and 17. I've seen Mr. Frank somewhere. Where is he? There he is. I'll see if I can meet you. You've got some.
Thank you. We'll try to be brief. I know you've got other business to take care of. We do have a communication letter here for you.
Yes, sir.
This could be covered verbally, but we usually issue these. It covers really all the communication requirements related to auditor to board governance.
Don't you embrace neither, you embrace neither of them?
This letter outlines the fact that we performed the audit for the city in the first paragraph and does discuss the fact that we are performing really as a group auditor this year, which is the first time for us because Newport Utilities is using another audit firm to perform their audit. So therefore we were conducting a group audit with a component auditor, which is new. And you'll see some report changes in our auditors' report related to that. Relate to significant audit findings, we had none and you'll find that in the report. There's two reports issued at the back of your bound copy of your report and both of those are clean with no findings. In both the internal control compliance report at the financial statement level and also the uniform guidance report for OMB 133 related to your single audit for federal programs. Of course, you all exceeded $750,000, the city and the schools together because your report does include the audit of the school system. And therefore we've issued reports related to those and their major programs along with the cities. We did exclude the utilities report. Their report's issued separately as a single audit report for the utilities. As far as qualitative aspects, there was really no new accounting policies this year that were applied that had any significance. On the second page, it talks about accounting estimates. Any set of financial statements, whether private sector or governmental, does include certain estimates that are sensitive to the assumptions that are made. In this case, we do point out that depreciation expense related to the historical cost of capital assets is sensitive to the estimation of your useful life of those capital assets. Those would be buildings, your streets, infrastructure, equipment, trucks, power-related equipment and so forth that both the city and the schools. Also, your net pension liability or asset, you're participating as part of the TCRS agent plan here at the city. Some of the school systems employees are also covered under that plan. Also, the, there's a teacher plan at the school, a couple of different ones. So the state Tennessee Conservative Retirement System hires a actuarial firm to do an actuarial report. On the fund level, your contributions on an annual basis are reported as part of your expenditures when compared to budget. But on the governmental basis, government-wide basis financial statements that add your long-term assets, long-term debt, the pension expense is measured on an actuarial basis. So there's conversion of your contributions to the actuarial basis of pension expense recognition. So you might keep that in mind if you're looking at those sets of financial statements.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, you can.
Does the number for the long-term assets versus long-term liabilities impress you, make it alarming or what's your, in your firm's status on that ratio of long-term assets versus long-term liabilities maybe compared to other cities?
You're in good shape in that regard. Of course, back when Gatsby 34 reporting, you had two sets of financial statements within your report, one on the governmental-wide basis, it's really a school basis, and one on the fund level, which is more of a modified accrual basis, which doesn't recognize long-term debt and long-term assets. So it's a major difference. There's some other differences too, but that is the major difference. But you could adopt the recognition of your infrastructure assets on a long-term basis where you went back and actually tried to capture the cost of your streets, roads, warm water, drainage systems, traffic signals on either a prospective base or a historical basis. And you all would adopt it, I think, on a prospective basis. So, you know, from that standpoint, you adopted from that point forward and the improvements from that point forward or the number would probably be larger.
That's right.
Okay, on as far as disclosures and they were consistent, there was no differences between this year and last year related to those. We didn't have any difficulties completing the audit and it was filed before the end of December when it was due by the state. Corrected and uncorrected misstatements, we made some adjustments to the various funds and assisted in the government-wide interest, but nothing that was not expected. And anything we passed was not material in nature, both individually or in aggregate to any of our opinion units because we're given multiple opinions on these financial statements. We got a management representation letter. We had no disagreements related to the application of accounting standards or general accepted accounting principles. We're, as far as management consultation, we're not aware of any second opinions that management wanted to solve related to accounting treatment. And then other audit findings on the very last page for issues, we do consult on accounting treatment with management, but nothing that relate to our answers is a condition for our retention. We did add a sentence here in that section about being the group auditor. As group auditor, we've done no instance which the evaluation of the work of a component auditor raised concerns about quality of that work to be included in your report. And so therefore there's no limitations imposed on us as the group auditor in releasing our final audit report. Other matters, we talk about a lot of data in here that's required supplementary information. Most of that is the management discussion analysis and a lot of required statistical tables related to the pension history. And the general idea of governmental accounting standard 68 when it was adopted a little over two years ago, three years ago, it's been kind of on the street for about five, but they gave a couple of years for adoption to take place, was the fact that there would be 10-year historical tables that would show you the trend of pension funding. And so we've gotten up to three years, so in some cases there's three to four years of data in these schedules. But again, those are not required, they're required supplementary information, but not one that we audit, so we don't give an opinion on those. We do compare those to the financial statements, which we do. There's other supplementary information. We audit that information and give an affirmative assurance related to it and its relationship to the financial statements. The statistical section has a few data items in it and the introductory section, which we don't audit. So that kind of covers that. If you look at the audit, and I'll try to be real quick because it's a, really it's a big report because it does have the entire operations of the city within it. So, you know, it's over 100 something pages long. But as far as the city's concerned, I think the major things you'll be interested in, of course, there's a transmittal letter that starts after the table contents and a listing of officials. But on page four is the auditor's report. I've already talked about some changes to that that are a little bit different because we're doing a group audit that we've not done in the past. We are reporting on the financial statements, this report of the governmental activities, business-type activities, major fund and aggregate remaining funds that make up the collective financial statements, what we'll term the basic financial statements. There's a paragraph there that just briefly talks about management's responsibility for the preparation and the fair presentation of the financial statements. And our responsibility to audit that information starts in the third paragraph. We do point out that we did an audit of financial statements of the Newport electric system or the Newport water system, sewer system. And we talk about the amount of assets and that are in both of those and the total revenues that are in the financial statement for those, basically to give the reader an idea of, you know, the magnitude of those numbers on the business-type activities because it makes up 100% of them. Finally, we do talk about general, what a general audit encompasses in the last paragraph of page four. And then finally, we discuss the fact that we gathered enough sufficient information and evidence to give audit opinions on the financials. And so our opinions start there on the top of page five, that we've audited the financial statements and examined the report of other auditors. Financial statements were to present fairly in all material respects the respective financial position of the governmental activities, business-type activities, each major fund, the aggregate remaining funds, and the budgetary comparisons of the major funds, which are the general fund and the general purpose school fund of the city. That's a clean, unmodified opinion, so we don't have any exceptions. And then from there on, we're just discussing other information that's in the financial statements. The required information that's in the management discussion analysis and the pension ratios. The other information on that page discusses both the basic financial statements and the other supplementary information, including the scheduled federal and state awards. We do discuss here the fact that we give an opinion on those statements. However, we do not include the reports or supplementary information or given opinion related to those that are included in Newport Utilities, two sets of financial statements and their schedule of expenditures and federal awards that are audited by other auditors. And then lastly, on page six, we inform the reader that there are other reports to examine in conjunction with the report and they should read those to understand artistic related internal control compliance. The management discussion analysis starts on the next page and if you look over on page 10, there's some comparative tables there for both governmental activities and business-type activities. You can see the growth in total assets went from 30 million, 469 to 33 million, 169.
My question to you now is, after reading that and putting a star beside it, is that a, is that a characteristic that you see when you do a bunch of audits of the city? Is that a good sign that our assets have increased three plus million dollars?
Yes, and particularly if you look at your unrestricted net position, which went from 2.3 million roughly to 3.9 million roughly at the bottom of that column.
That stood out to me first and foremost when you reviewed this audit.
And then the statement of expenditures and revenues, now of course these are governmental, the government-wide statements, they're not at the fund balance level. But again, here you're changing that position to about 3.1 million dollars. That's combined both city and schools.
That's city and schools?
Yes, that's city and schools. Because the governmental activities do include both and all the funds related to the activities at both places.
Justina, let me ask a question too. We're paying some of these notes off too, is that correct? Mr. Fincham, is that, you want that brought up now or you just, you want to do it or no?
Not until we get to the budget amendment.
Oh, okay. I didn't know, I just thought people would know what we're doing.
Yeah, well, I mean, that's, that's a part of the budget amendment. We're going to try to pay off one note tonight, yeah.
Okay.
But anyway, you can, you can tell that there's been positive change there on the governmental level. I will flip on over and you can read the rest of the M.D.A. of your ledger. It is, you know, seven or eight pages that give you sort of a snapshot of the financial activities of the city and how it changed from last year to this year. So it is a brief way to look at the financial states and gain an understanding. We talked about already, starting on page 21, is the financial statements on the government-wide but, and the fact that fund balance had increased or net position increased. But if you turn over to page 27, you'll see the fund level statements. And here you can see these by fund and you can, and it is broken out by the two major funds, which is the general fund and the general purpose school fund. And you can see the total revenues of the general fund was 11 million, 584, 140, while expenditures for departmental-level activities and debt service was 11 million, 265, 674, leaving revenues over expenditures of about $318,000.
Is that a number that alarms you or is that on pace now?
That's on pace and that's a good result. Especially, you know, when you take into consideration your, that doesn't include your tax equivalents yet, which are down below. You've got transfers out, which went both to the schools in that second column, and of course you transferred out 724,000, 975 of your capital outlay fund, which served to buy or purchase and make improvements on capital outlets. So, you know, that section between the proceeds from capital leases, which funded some of those expenditures and the in lieu of tax, your sources were positive there by 769,000. So your general fund fund balance overall went up a little over a million dollars for the year. So you're looking there at an ending balance of just slightly less than $6 million. Because I think if we went back probably four years ago, that number was less than $2 million. So you all have made a great difference in your financial stability.
Well, we've got some people, some tight pencils and our citizens stepped up to play too.
So, I was just looking at your ratio and I know several years back we talked about what is a worthy goal for your fund balance and we were talking about 50% of your annual expenditures being a place where you could really reach a good financial position and you're at about 47.5% right now, so.
You never know what can come up. You never know the unexpected. Try to be prepared for it.
But you are, you're better prepared for that now than you were several years ago.
That's what I'm just glad maybe the public, many times, can understand a little bit about what's going on, you know, showing where things are going and what they've helped us do and the, I'll finish up in a minute when you get through, I've got comments and some people.
But I do want to point that out because I think that is very positive and that ratio is a very positive improvement. The financial statements that follow, you've got like page 28 is a bridge statement that goes from how you achieve your governmental fund net change and fund balance to how your net position and the governmental activities relate to one another. And you can see the long-term assets and long-term liabilities being added back and forth there. And then also the change in all the pension recognition. Because in the fund statements, it's basically your contributions that you make at your actuarial rate, which this year was a little over 14%. And payroll was pension contributions for your city plan.
Uh-huh.
That's probably about average. I've seen some that are a little lower and I've seen some that are over 16%. So, you know, probably on the low side, we've seen some that are 8 and 9%. So, you know, that would probably be, but you are well-funded. As a matter of fact, if we go back to your balance sheet on the governmental-wide level where we got the actuarial recognition, you actually had a small pension asset. So, and then after that, the individual funds are presented and the footnote disclosures, which are, you know, 70 or 80 pages long. I'm not going to go into those, but you can, you know, if you see anything in there that you have a question about, later you can certainly call us and ask us. I'll turn over to the last section in the report, which is the internal control compliance section. And that's where these other letters are on, in page 121. This is a clean letter with no findings on internal control compliance related to the city and the schools audit. We do make specific reference to the fact that this does not include Newport Utilities. There, there says audited by other auditors. Same thing on page 123 is your OMB uniform guidance administrative requirements later on major funds. We had no findings on the major funds related to the city and schools, but we did not include an opinion related to utilities.
I have a question.
Okay.
On page, you go on.
Just flipping from 124 to 125.
I want you to go back to page 97 just a second.
Okay.
Scheduled funding progress for Newport City Schools, other post-employment benefits?
Yes.
The 2016, 2017 number?
Uh, yes.
1.665 million dollars?
Yes.
What's your analysis of it?
We didn't have a new actuarial study, so we left those numbers up in. Of course, some of these OPF benefit plans, it's rare to find one that actually has a trust agreement with a trust fund. Matter of fact, we only, out of 30-something governmental audits, we do, not all of them have OPF plans, but a lot of them do. There's only one that has a funded trust plan. have OPF plans, but a lot of them do, there's only one that has a funded trust plan. We have one electric system that we audit that has a funded post-employment benefit trust plan for health insurance benefits. Most, all the others are unfunded, which you all is that way. Going back to page one twenty-six, number twenty-five, this is the summary of the audit that's required for the uniform guidance, compliance audit for federal funding. As you can see, we basically give a summary there that we gave an unmodified opinion on the financial statements. In internal control over financial reporting, we had no findings or material weaknesses. In Section D, as far as internal control over major programs, we had no material weaknesses identified and no significant deficiencies. We gave an unmodified report on that, on the major programs we tested. And in Section G, it outlines the major programs that we tested, which here at the city included the housing, urban development home partnership program, the Safe Routes to School program, and then at the school, it included the National School Breakfast Program and Lunch Program. The threshold for determination of those programs was a thousand dollars for federal funding in total. The audit was not determined to be a low-risk audit that's earned over a two-year period, but you had no findings in your report last year, you have no findings this year, and your federal audit clearinghouse report was filed timely, so I expect you all next year to be considered a low-risk audit, which is a great achievement. And then, of course, we're required by the state to include a positive statement related to status of prior findings that were in on page one twenty-six, so we state that there were prior findings in our report.
Can I ask you, we've asked our citizens to step up the plate and help us get our city back on stable ground. I wish there was a bunch of new buildings and new roads, and we're making progress, but if I can use your words and your clean and unmodified opinion, are you pleased with what we're doing?
Yes, I think you've made great progress in the last three years, there's no doubt. Were you aware, I'm thinking back four years ago, five years ago, when you had difficulty, you know, cash flowing your payroll at times?
Say that one more time.
I said that I can remember forty-five years ago when you had difficulties cash in your payroll.
We came within two days of not being able to write checks.
So, you know, this is a great improvement where you are now. And I do see some cities, and I'll mention this, it could be something you may want to consider, but they do sometimes assign or set aside financial stability plans related from their fund balance. I could think of one in particular that says that they're a little bit smaller revenue talent new law, but they did set aside two million dollars out of their caches like a rainy day fund. Of course, that's not chiseled, it's done, but to move that out on a assigned basis for financial stability and sort of a rainy day fund, it would take a vote in council to move it from being assigned, unassigned, or unrestricted. So you may want to consider if you can get yourself to the point where you've reached maybe your financial goal. I know there's always needs for improvement, especially in equipment and departmental expenditures related to equipment, long-term assets, and just as was mentioned earlier, you know, roofing and building maintenance, and those are large expenditures. And, you know, without having the financial resources, it's difficult to approach a decision because you know you don't have the funds to do that if you don't have yourself in a position from a liquidity standpoint to do that.
I think we've tried to upgrade in every department, the police department, fire departments, recreation departments, every department, I think we've tried to upgrade where we'd gone downhill for several years and never, just kept costing more money to try to patch something, it was to buy something, and I believe we're beginning to see benefits of the people sacrificing for us, just hoping they understand, but we're better off. I also wanted to thank you and Haley, she's a hometown girl, but we just want to kind of appreciate the job y'all are doing. Also, the department heads, like, having your budget in on time and staying within your budget, it's been real good. And the city administrator, like, and all the people that work in the office down here, but I'd most like to congratulate Tina Matthews, she's made a big difference in our financial part this year, and we want to tell you thank you, Tina, for what you've done.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I'd like to echo that. I think all this is a reflection of Tina's work and her staff, I can attest, and I know you all can too, the times that you all come down here and spend time and talk to Tina and see how she goes about her business, and she's led the way on this, she's made it happen, and this, I'm very proud of the work she's done, it's not me, it's her. She done it, she made it happen, and this is all as a result of her hard work and her dedication. I guarantee you, she stays on top of things every day, and I just...
She knows much as she tells me, though.
She has a harder time, but she'll make her point and argue it, I guarantee you that.
Well, I, we do appreciate providing the service for the council and for management, and we appreciate the cooperation we receive from management. They're always willing to respond to our suggestions and inquire about what they can do better, and they're very cooperative and helpful during the audit, and it certainly makes it more efficient and makes it run a whole lot smoother. And Haley Slago has been our lead person on the audit for five years now, and she does a fabulous job, I think, for us and our firm, and we like her to do the audit, and is leading our audit team, so I appreciate your management, and I appreciate her also.
Thanks, Frank.
Thank you.
One thing, just also to make you aware while Frank's here, during Tina and I's meeting with Frank and Haley last month, we had a two-and-a-half-hour meeting with them where we went over the book, and so you got a very abbreviated version tonight to what she and I got to do. But we did talk to him about trying to meet our commitment on try, after three years of the tax increase, looking at what we could do to try to help the taxpayers as far as a rollback. We pledged at the very beginning, when we asked for a tax increase, we said, "Give us three years to get on our feet, and we'll try to roll it back as much as we can." As Frank has reported here tonight, we're almost, you know, we're at forty-seven percent, we need to be at fifty percent, and that's really close. And so we asked him, what did he feel comfortable in us looking at to roll back taxes this year in the next budget cycle? And the number that we come up with was twenty-five cents is what we could do and still be on track to stay financially stable and not have to look at coming back in two or three years and asking for more money again. I don't think it would be fair to the taxpayers if we'd cut taxes a large amount and turned right around and took it right back. I think it would look like we don't know what we're doing if we did that. And so I would rather do what we can afford to do without getting us in a bind and then trying to make it as many years as we can without having to ask them for money again. And I think that we've got ourselves in a position where we can do that. I feel comfortable with the twenty-five cents, that's why I wanted to bring it up while Frank was here, so you could, I'd say it in front of him, and it wouldn't be said later on when he wasn't here. But we did discuss with him what we could do, told him that we'd love to do thirty-one cents, because the county went up thirty-one cents to try to break even on that, but he was not comfortable with thirty-one cents. And so that's what we're going to try, that's going to be our recommendation from a budget standpoint this year, that we roll back taxes twenty-five cents.
In my opinion, that number needed to be higher, but after an explanation from you that, and Frank, while you're standing here as well, as far as transparency goes, we've got a lot of projects, we've got our head in, and we have to have the money to pay for them first...
Even if it's a grant.
Before we get reimbursed. So we're actually in a better position to even roll it back even more, but with the things we've got going that you folks want done, we've got to have a higher cash fund to take your business. So that twenty-five could, that's a decent number, in my opinion.
We're trying to always try to plan for the unexpected, too, things that you never know, been several things come up this year that didn't have any idea that we were going to have to do, but that's taken a lot of it, but at least we have enough money to try to get it paid for.
The grammar school roof, you know, the parking lot downtown, those were two things, you know, that needed to be done, but that we just didn't foresee, and so, and there's going to always be things like that that come out of left field at you, and you've got to deal with it.
Thank you, Frank.
Thank you. Okay, the next thing on the agenda is a consideration of the reading of the ordinance. I'll let you, Mr. Hurst, take care of that.
Yes, sir, Mr. Vice Mayor, the next item on the agenda is consideration of the first reading of ordinance number two thousand eighteen dash zero one, amended city of Newport Municipal Code Title VII, Fire Protection and Fireworks, Chapter Three, Fire Code Section Seven dash three oh one, Fire Codes Adoption Replacing Section Six One Zero Four Point Two, Petroleum Gas Usage. This would be the first reading of that.
We just need to make those.
Jeremy, the fire inspector's here, if you all have any questions or would like to hear any kind of summary from him, he's present here tonight.
You need to go ahead and speak up, Jeremy, if you've got something.
Yeah, basically, what we've got, we're a little stricter than some of the places around us on this, on this, basically the storage of the propane tanks. And the way our ordinance is now, when we put it in, there wasn't a need to have them out the way they are, so it was restricted except for areas that's zoned M one, M two, light industrial and heavy industrial. But I've had a couple of places approach me wanting to maybe sell propane, some other stores, and as I've looked around in the area, you know, we were a lot more restrictive. So the way this one, this ordinance we would change it to, it would be, you couldn't put tanks downtown in the C one district, but any other place would be restricted except for the light industrial and the heavy industrial. Restricted means that it would be up to two thousand gallons, and you still have to meet setbacks, property lines, and things like that. So basically, we're just kind of loosening it up, we were more strict than Greenville, Moorestown, Kingsport, and some other areas, so... And it also may open up some more, I didn't want to hinder businesses that wanted to sell propane and those type of things, so that's what we're doing.
Here's a motion. If I hear a motion, we accept the terms of that?
I accept, I make the motion to accept ordinance two thousand eighteen dash oh one.
Motion been made.
Second.
Mike Hansel, second.
Need a roll call.
Okay, let's give it to him first. Okay, roll call, Ms. Tina.
Alderman Jeff Panther.
Yes.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight.
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Prophet.
Yes.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Okay, the next thing that was on the agenda, after reading it today and talking with our city administrator and some people on the planning commission, and I called them, and I thought we ought to put that off till the next meeting, because it's not clear, somebody's going to have to make up their mind, they're going to have to give us some headway on what they want. They said one thing, and sort of coming about, it's maybe they either need to be with us or not, and I suggested, and they agreed with me, and I hope it, get to explain it to you all, I tried to a little bit, but I'd like you to be more educated, I'd like for us to be more educated, because you don't have an hour before you meet to come up with something that we didn't know anything about, the whole story about it.
Just here representing this. Okay, thank you.
I have had work for you all, but our organization, so I'll let you all have that in case we get to come for the next one. We have met with the zoning and the community, but apparently we're a little bit confused too about what happened, because we were told that we needed to come here. Yes, sir.
Sorry.
What we are is, we're a pregnancy help center, so what we do for the community is girls can come into us, and they can take classes, and they learn how to be better parents, they earn stuff when they come in to take classes. The reason that we are at the point to where we need something larger, right now, we are in the basement of Lincoln Avenue Baptist Church, which was sufficient when we started, because we had no clients, but in the past four months, we've doubled in our clients. And so also, our goal is to reach girls that maybe a church would turn off, you know, we want an area where they're not going to feel judgment if they come in. And so this house for us is a perfect location, because it would give us more space, it's in a well-traveled area, but it's off of the road enough to where they would feel like they could come in, their identity would be kept private. The issue is, obviously, that it's residential, and we wouldn't have anybody living in the house, they would just be coming for appointments, it would be very low traffic at the maximum, we would have eight clients a day. Right now, we're just there four hours, our center's just open four hours a day, it's open Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. And so right now, like I said, we're just asking that you all consider to rezone it so that we could use that house. The one, there is a pregnancy center very similar to ours in Jefferson City, and they are very successful, and they use a house, I guess because we would be dealing with pregnant ladies and ladies that have children, just the home feel works better, so that's why we're actually looking at a house and not maybe a storefront or that type of building.
You know, I can speak, I thank everybody here, we've talked a little bit about it, but everybody, there's not one of us that's not in favor of what you all have done. I really agree with what you've done, that's not been the point, the point is, they need to get this figured out about the rezoning, because they said they'd turned some other people down on the same thing that you're asking, or similar thing to what you're asking, and if you do it for one, you don't do it for the next one, you're going to open up a can of worms. And we were just trying to get them to get it straight, let us give us a real sensible answer for the next one, and we go from there, we're for you a hundred percent on what you've done, so if we can get that worked out, we'll be back. And I went over and looked at the housing and stuff, and it's going to be cleaned up area that's, y'all have done wonders already, and getting ready to do a lot more.
It's over next to the City Park Grocery.
Yes, sir. And that's a, we have a letter from Newport Baptist Church, which is up the hill, they've been a big supporter of us, and I guess that is another positive thing, is we would be doing a complete remodel on the house, so it wouldn't just be what our ministry's doing, but we would bring, you know, the area would look nicer, because the house right now is sitting vacant.
My daughter, y'all bought two houses so you could clean up both of them, because you couldn't do one without the other, it's going to make things look better. If we can just get approved through the planning commission in the right way, without putting anybody in the bind, we'd be glad to try to help you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Frank. So we're making a motion, Terry.
We don't really need a motion for this.
Just wait until next meeting to get them time to meet first and get it cleared up. Okay, Mr. Hurst, you want to read the next reading of the ordinance?
Yes, sir, the next item is the ordinance number two thousand eighteen dash zero three, an ordinance of amending the annual operating budget and capital program in the city of Newport, Tennessee, fiscal year two thousand seventeen dash two thousand eighteen.
Now, Mr. Vice Mayor, this is where I wanted to talk about the debt. We have in this, of course, this is something we do try to do quarterly during the course of the year, just to do mostly, it's just housekeeping things, moving stuff from one line item to another, if we've got extra money, move it to a different line item to keep everything in balance. But what we have in here, and I have spoken with each of you individually about this, and so you're aware of it, but just so we can publicize it, what we do have in here, the big thing, is two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars to pay off one of our notes on the transfer station, which was built some years back, we took two loans to build it, we've been trying to pay down, we had hoped to pay off both those notes, one last year and one this year, but we put off the one last year because we got hit with the grammar school roof and some other things that had us, made us have to back off, the other one's for about a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars, the other loan we have on it, and so we did not get to pay it off last year as we had hoped. We saved that money for, like I say, the grammar... had hoped. We saved that money for, like I say, the grammar school roof and some other things. But we would like, we are in good enough shape, we feel, to make this payment, and that will get the majority of the debt on the transfer station gone. We're still owed $178,000 on it, and it has a big effect on our debt ratio. We, when we started this process three years ago, our debt ratio was forty...
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight percent. It's supposed to be thirty. It's currently 38.5, and after we pay this off, it'll be 36.7. So, we're slowly incrementally getting closer to that 30% where we're supposed to be. And so, we do have that in here. That's the big thing. The rest of it's just small amounts. But this is a large amount, and it's a big deal because it is continuing to pay off this debt that you all inherited and trying to get us more and more on sound financial footing.
I appreciate that, Mr. Finchman, Tina, keeping us informed on what's going on. I think people understand we're trying to pay the debt down, get back on our feet. It's working so far. All right, the next thing, Mr. Hurst.
And this one requires two readings and a public here.
Okay.
Motion.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion. We have that budget amendment?
I make the motion, second.
Motion made and seconded. Okay, oh, Mr. Hansel, second. Okay, roll call.
Alderman Jeff Fancher.
Yes.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight.
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit.
Yes.
Yes, sir. The next item is ordinance number 2018-04, an ordinance of amending the annual operating budget and capital program of the city of Newport, Tennessee, fiscal year 2017-2018 for Newport Grammar School.
And this is just the grammar school doing what we just did, just doing some...
We just need a motion.
Some budget amendments.
Motion to approve.
Motion seconded by Steve Smith. The roll call, Ms. Tina.
Alderman Jeff Fancher.
Yes.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight.
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit.
Yes. Okay, next, read that and then I'll...
Yes, sir. The next item is ordinance number 2018-05, an ordinance granting the franchise to Newport Utilities Commission, which should be Newport Utilities, to build, construct, operate, and maintain the cable television system in the city of Newport, Tennessee, and setting forth conditions accompanying the granting of this franchise. I think Gary's got, helped prepare that. He's familiar with it.
It worked with Mr. McSweene, with the Utilities Board, Mr. Ray, and Terry on this. I think we're all comfortable with it. It just gives them permission to hang lines and operate the fiber network within the city limits. And I know that 19-page document front and back, if you have questions.
It's just sort of formal, isn't it?
It is, yes, sir. The charter and AT&amp;T have one. You have to have one as part of the, to have the right of way to operate through the power lines and whatnot.
I make the motion to accept this ordinance.
I've got a motion. I hear a second. Bobby Knight seconding. Okay, roll call, Ms. Tina.
Alderman Jeff Fancher.
Yes, ma'am.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight.
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit.
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Mr. Glenn Ray, if you don't care, I'll put you on the spot. Tell us how you feel about the progress. And I've got my commitment to Newport Utilities broadband right there filled out, so we'll take that back and put it where it needs to be. Is there any updates you can tell us about what's been accomplished thus far and some results you've got from your initial hookups?
I can tell you that we're right on plan with our business plan. We've hit all our emails on that, just like we had put into our schedule. We've got test customers that are receiving the signal now for fiber broadband, plus the internet, and we have more paid customers coming on in the month of February before they test the system. And I will queue with delivery to customers in the month of March, just like the plan.
I believe, now if I'm saying this correct, Mr. Ray, how many towns have got this in the United States?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two, and Newport, Tennessee is on that list now. It's 23. And other towns have made comments what a difference it's made to them and their towns about how many more industries they've got because of having the broadband and stuff. And I believe we'll see a big change here in a little while. We've already had a few changes, made difference in several jobs in Cotton. Let's look at this now.
Glenn, you've been unwavering on your belief in this since day one, is it even stronger?
Actually, we're actually getting customers signed up early, even though the service is not available in the month of February. We've got customers signing up, assuming we get the service to them in front of our homes, we're ready to do it.
It's going to make a...
Hundreds already signed up.
A difference in, what, eight or nine more jobs in the next little bit, two?
Fifteen, about fifteen.
Fifteen, I thought, okay. Everything's looking up. Okay, consideration of the sale of the city of Newport buildings on North Street, Mr. Fancher?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. We have a written offer from a Mr. Raymond Anthony of Warford Road. Says he is interested in purchasing the property located at 625 North Street. His desire is to open a child daycare for the community. Upon opening, he plans to employ two full-time employees, and as the daycare grows, so will the number of employees. He goes on to say that he's done inspection of the building. It needs extensive work, which I can verify. And so, that, it says at the bottom, "It is my hope that you will accept my offer of $5,000 for this property."
Is that Mr. Warford?
Uh, Raymond, Mr. Raymond Anthony, lives on Warford Road.
Is Mr. Anthony here?
I don't know. I'm only, I'm only driving by there last night on the way out of town. In the daycare business, I'm not an expert, but by no means. But would you not have to have outside place for kids to play?
I don't know. I don't know.
Yeah, that's a requirement.
That's what I thought. Well, I was just thinking, planning on putting the fence around the front of that. I don't know where you're going to...
The only stipulation that I would recommend that we put on any sale of that property, the justification that was used to purchase the property, was the fact that barricades were put up at the corner that did not allow school buses and fire trucks to be able to make that turn. So, I would recommend that at any point in time when you sell the property, that the stipulation be put into the deed that that corner could never be blocked to limit access for school buses and emergency vehicles.
Because it had been blocked before, and if he decides to buy that, and whether you make it clear to him, he knows the rules and regulations for that, and also...
Well, we would put it in the deed. That would be my recommendation to you, that that be put in the deed to anybody we sell it to, that that corner cannot be blocked.
And he needs to make sure he understands before he thinks about a daycare. That'd be up to him, but it'll have to be approved.
Yes.
He'll know that upfront. But it'd be put back on the tax flow and stuff if we go ahead and sell it, but he'll have to understand. If you don't want it, that's fine. But all right, we need to go on with it, too.
Motion.
This doesn't really fall on us, I guess, but has he been properly vetted, checked out through the various... No. I mean, we haven't done anything other than, he sent this letter, and we vetted it to the agenda.
It'll take a whole lot of work, no matter who gets it.
I haven't spoken with him.
Bad shape, and it'll take a lot of work. Okay, did I hear a motion? We sell it?
I make a motion, sir.
Okay, Bobby Knight, second. Got a motion?
Excuse me, is that with the stipulation that we place a restriction on the deed?
Right.
That keep the corner from being blocked.
Because somebody tried to block it once, and really missed another. We got a motion and a second. Roll call, Ms. Tina.
Alderman Jeff Fancher.
No.
Alderman Mike Hansel. Alderman Bobby Knight.
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit.
Yes.
Okay, three to two.
Okay. You know, if he don't buy it, I don't know who would buy it and what they can do with it anyway because it's in real bad shape.
We have had, we've had probably 30 to 40 people inspect the property over the past several years, and this is the first offer we've had on it. I've had people to tell me, and again, I haven't spoken to this gentleman. He spoke with Sarah up front. He talked to Mark Hill. Mark Hill took him over and led him toward the property, I think, maybe twice. But I never did speak with the gentleman. But in the past, I've had several people tell me they were going to make an offer and then not. And we may even have one guy that did make an offer on it. I'm not sure, but he never did come back and follow through. But it's, you know, I had one guy look at it just last week, and he said it would take $35,000 to $40,000 to renovate it. And so, that, you know, he said that there's not a lot you can do with that small a space.
I was trying to get that off the city. He's got enough grandkids. I believe he could backfill it up, so I know.
Okay.
Okay, we got any bids or purchase or expenses?
Well, we've got, Mr. Vice Mayor, we added, we added something to the agenda.
We added resolution number 2018-02 that Mr. Carver has to be added for the downtown...
The Tennessee downtown program, it's a good formality. We're going to apply it to happen. And we've already done this once in 16, but they recommended that we update it. And I mean, it's updated as in the date. I didn't change really any of the language. I say me, Regina actually did it. Sorry, Regina, I didn't mean to take credit for your work.
I make a motion to update it.
Got a motion, Bobby Knight, second, but Jeff Fancher, roll call.
Alderman Jeff Fancher.
Yes, ma'am.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight.
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
Steve.
Okay. Oh, sorry.
Nobody heard you.
He was writing on paper and I said...
I'm sorry. Vice Mayor Mike Profit.
Do you like Steve? Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, bids, purchase, or expenses? None? Okay. Okay, right now, we've got comments from citizens. I believe we've got a gentleman. We'll set your timer there for five minutes and be ready to go.
Okay, first off, I'm happy to hear that the city is in good financial shape because I'm here to request that we have funding for the Friends Animal Shelter. We have set up an agreement with you folks, and we've made several changes so that it would be in accordance with what you would desire for the animal shelter. And Mr. Fancher was kind enough to invite me and whoever wanted to come with me, our manager came with me yesterday to observe your shelter that you have in the city. And we found it was very clean and nice, however, wholly inadequate for the size that you need for the city of Newport. I went through some papers yesterday and found the monthly reports that were made to the shelter showing the number of animals that came in from the city, the number that were owner surrendered, the number that were brought in from animal control and so forth. I only found 10 months of this year. That was the year 15. And on those 10 months, there were 450 animals brought in from the city to come to the shelter. The shelter that you have now has, we counted seven large cages for dogs and about 22, I believe, that were large enough for cats. When you figure that there'd be 45, average of 45 animals coming in per month, that's wholly inadequate. And I don't see how this could function for the city of Newport. If you had that many animals coming in, I don't know where you'd put them. And in addition to that, the building is, doesn't even have a sign saying it's an animal shelter. There's no means for animals to be having any outside area. There's both cats and dogs in the same close proximity. And any shelter will tell you that cats should not be in the same building with dogs. It causes too much stress for them with the barking dogs and all.
Did you say too much stress?
Stress, yes. In addition, it isn't, when you figure, we found, we counted seven dogs there at the time.
How many, ma'am?
Seven, seven dogs were in the shelter. In our shelter now, we have over 100 dogs and probably about 50 cats. So, when people are coming in wanting to find a companion, an animal companion for themselves, they have a choice not of seven dogs, but 100 dogs. We have large, small, different breeds, and, you know, a variety of cats and kittens. They can also feel comfortable bringing a cat in that they have to surrender because we are a no-kill shelter, and we are doing a wonderful job of finding homes for these animals. And in addition, I don't know how many of you folks have been over to see our shelter. Could you put up your hands, those that have been to our... Well, as you know then, we have made tremendous changes. It is a beautiful shelter now and 100% better than what it was. We've put a lot of money into it, a lot of effort. And now, we need adequate funds. Problem we have is that we don't have enough help, and so many of us are having to volunteer. I know that my friend here, Janice Jenkins, is there probably 30 hours a week. And it's not fair that our shelter is not adequately, hasn't gotten enough money to really hire people. We can't, and at this point, we are getting some money from the county. They have paid in November, December, and January for us, and we're hoping at the meeting on Thursday they'll give us the money for February. The problem is, we can't very well hire somebody and say, you know, "We can pay you this month, but we don't know about next month." When we are trying to hire good help, we have to let them know that we're going to have them for, you know, it takes a month just to train people correctly. And so, in order to hire people, we have to know that we're going to have money coming in every month. And we really need the $100,000 to come from the city and from the county. We've been open since November and doing the best we can, and we just would like to know that you folks will be here to help us out.
Thank you.
Terry, can, did you want to say it bigger? Okay. Do you have any questions?
Well, I do. You said, you bring up these numbers of 400 and 500 animals. The report I see that came from January 18, 2018, there was only 40 animals brought into our shelter. Hold on, 48?
Mark, you wanted to make sure this thing went off.
Which one was?
According to this Newport Animal Shelter report, according to this Newport Animal Shelter report that was issued, there was 40 animals brought in, 15 dogs, six puppies, 17 cats, two kittens, total of 40. Unfortunately, four of them are euthanized, one due to aggression, three due to illness. So, that leaves a total of 23, excuse me, that's four of those 40. From what I see here, we had a 5% adoption rate, 23% rescue rate, and a 20% return to owner rate for a total of 48%. Did you just tell me there's only seven dogs there in our facility?
Yesterday, there were...
Are you sure?
I'm speechless. I mean, our facility is working. I'm not downplaying the fact you all need help. But we, our facility's running good right now.
Well, doesn't this tell you something if in the past?
No, it didn't tell me anything. That's the past. What I'm going about was January 2018. I'm not trying to be, I'm just looking...
What I'm going about was January two thousand eighteen, I'm not trying to be, I'm just looking at the numbers.
Uh-huh, uh-huh. Well, I'll tell you what, a lot of animals are coming in that we don't know whether they're from the city or the county. People will, will lie to you, they'll also, you know, when they want to move an animal out that they can't handle anymore, they don't put it in their front yard and, and for somebody to pick up, they take it out to the country.
And vice versa.
No, no.
And vice versa.
If you say so. But anyway, there's, if there was four hundred and fifty animals that came in from the city in the year two thousand fifteen, it goes to, actually, you'd have to figure it'd be about, it was four hundred and fifty in ten months, so probably it was five hundred in twelve months. So you'd have to figure there's that many dogs that need to be cared for from the city at this time. Why, why would it be different?
Well, it is different. I mean, the numbers reflect that.
It's only because people don't know that the shelter is even open. We have them coming in our shelter almost every day.
So you're saying you're accepting city dogs and cats now?
Yes, we have. Here we are. And county.
I'm sure that's the case.
And, you know, in addition to the fact of, of taking in these animals, we also provide a very nice place for people to come to look for an animal that they want. And also a place where they feel confident when they're bringing their animal in that they can no longer care for, that it's going to be well taken care of. We have, when they need to be vetted, we have, we just had a vet bill today for two, six hundred and some dollars from, for a couple of dogs. We're doing the best that we can, we'll take, take care of these animals the best that we can. We have a good outdoor space for them to play in. It's just a wonderful asset to this community. Now, what you have is, is not adequate for this community. And in actuality, looking back on the records, there is, from the two thousand and six census, there's six thousand eight hundred people that live in the city of Newport. If each one of them paid a dollar twenty cents per month, it would pay the hundred thousand that we'd need for the animal shelter. And I think, and this is only saying if, if all the money that, that you get came from property taxes, I know you also have money coming from sales taxes and other means. So it'd probably be a whole lot less than that. And I think that this is something that the people want.
Thank you.
Mayor with me.
Try to see him, mayor.
I'm Robert Brandon, with Friends Animal Shelter, I'm the director.
Are, are you the director now?
I am one of the managing directors.
Managing director, who is in charge now? Who's the director? Okay.
I'm a director, I don't work it down till...
Okay.
I'm the director of Friends.
Yes, sir.
Okay. We had modified our contract for y'all, Mr. Brandon's request, I came a couple of cages. And what we're now asking you to sign the contract. We modified it, we were going to straightforward y'all so that you would sign the contract. We understand the county's gonna sign. So we need to get busy to operate this animal shelter. And every year, if you don't get less animals, you get more. It seems always broke. So, so as it may, we will take care of it. We ship them out north wherever we get rid of them. This year, I've given over ten thousand dollars personally to it. And I thought we'd have given more, I've got two vans we have. Nevertheless, we can operate that animal shelter when you all used to operate it, you probably paid as much or more than we're asking now, possibly. So it's really, it will be well managed, money will be well spent, and you'll have an animal shelter that will function for your citizens. So I'm asking y'all, now we've got the contract, we modified it, you ain't going to couple of changes, we're able to accommodate that. From that time, sign the contract and let's get on with it.
You don't think our facility we got now is functioning properly for our citizens?
No. I think that bar is a ready place to put animals, if you had to put it in animals, as you get it every year, it would be a nightmare.
In your opinion?
I just say here, my opinion.
Mr. Brandon, you're, you're a smart man, and you're a businessman, right? I'm not sure what your, I'm not sure what your business is, but apparently, what I've been told, you've been successful. But, you know, city Newport, six thousand people. Scott County, twenty-nine, all around it to thirty thousand, that's twenty percent. City people pay county taxes. So based on that formula, we're paying twenty percent of that hundred thousand that this county has pledged right now, correct? Okay?
Presumably, yeah.
Presumably, meaning what?
Well, it may not be anything.
No, we are, with our taxes, twenty thousand dollars.
Well, I'm talking about the last several months the county has paid on a monthly basis.
Monthly basis.
But that's got, that's gonna stop.
And I, and that's gonna stop for what reason?
That is going to stop because we can't operate, that shelter operates on a monthly basis, with every month being a new month. It's a take on a digit exactly.
So you're holding us hostage to the future of the animal shelter and the county?
I'm holding you obligated to help run a first-class shelter, being a part of it, for, for your citizens.
Okay. As far as the numbers go, let's say the county did give the hundred thousand dollars. In theory, we've given twenty thousand of that one hundred, would you agree to that? Would, would you agree to that? Okay. So, in theory, would you say that we, if we were going to, even though the numbers are eighty percent county animals versus twenty percent city animals, do you still feel like we owe you the hundred thousand?
Eight, some odd thousand, yes. Now...
Why, why do you think we owe you that much? I just told you, we paid twenty thousand of that.
Why? I think if you owe it, I don't owe it.
No.
But it's what it's going to cost to operate that shelter on your behalf as well as the county's.
Last year, we spent, according to the audit, three hundred and forty-one thousand dollars on the animal shelter and animal control. This year projected, the reports were giving us a hundred and eighty-one thousand, three hundred and some odd dollars.
Probably be less than you did last year.
But first of all, we're not going to give the, we're not, taking out the hundred thousand dollars to the, to the animal shelter, county animal shelter. Plus, plus the fact that we've, we've sharpened the pencil. Go ahead, Mr. Brandon. Go ahead, Miss Fontaine.
I just wanted to make a comment, that in, in the past, you were kind enough to give us about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Now, we've got a much better shelter and we're asking for a hundred thousand. Why, why is this that they can't come up with a hundred thousand now when you, in the past, came up with two hundred and fifty thousand just last year?
That's what the big argument's been since day one, we've been giving way too much.
And now, finally, you know, the county has come up with a hundred thousand and I thought we had an agreement that if the county gave a hundred thousand, the city would give a hundred thousand, and vice versa. And so, we're in this catch-twenty-two thing, where the county says, well, we're gonna give the money, but then, then the city does, and the city says they're gonna give the money when the county does. And we're, we're stuck here.
Well, we thought that, we're waiting to see what the county did. Now, you're telling me that county's waiting on what we're gonna do, correct?
It's hard to say.
For sure. All we know is, they've paid for November, December, January, and I believe they'll pay for February. But again, this is going from month to month, we can't hire people this way. I really think that if you folks all came out and saw our shelter, you would be so proud of it. And, and the people who come in are so happy now, they're saying, this is so much better. This is, this is an asset to our community.
Not, not denying that.
Well, then, a hundred thousand, is that what you're paying?
Is it not worth a dollar and twenty-five cents per person, per month, to have this wonderful shelter? I, I would think that most people would think that would be the case.
See, now, how do we asking you for is less than you paid and had to pay in the past. So I think with our ability to run it and the fact that we're telling you, you'll be getting more than your money's worth, comparison speaking, with the years gone by. So you'll be paying less, but you'll be really getting your money's worth.
Well, can I ask you a frank question, you're...
Frank, yes.
Yes, sir. I was told that you said that if we don't give the hundred thousand dollars, you don't want a penny of our money. Is that correct?
No, I didn't say that. Who told you that?
Somebody told me a lie, then, sorry.
Yeah, we're all liars, right?
That's not ours, but you...
I'm just, I'm just...
I heard that.
Oh, you heard that? Okay, okay.
I heard from Annie. Mary, you told her or somebody?
What now?
Did you tell Annie that?
Who's Annie?
I'm Annie.
Oh, Anne. Anne, I know you're saying, sorry. No, we haven't, yeah, we had that conversation yesterday, I'm sure we did.
I have not said that to anybody.
Okay.
We will be part of the city and the county, and we can do it very economically, what we have to offer. You will have a first-class shelter. And I think that's worth it to the citizens. I hope it is.
Well, can I say, I don't know why I'm the, I'm the spokesman here, but can I pledge you that I'll get, we'll get together with all five of us without violating any rules to get an aggressive approach to what we want to do? Is that a fair, fair request to let us do that? We cannot do that, well, I'm not, I don't think anybody's here gonna sit here and say, let's make a motion, it's not on the agenda, to offer you a one hundred thousand dollars. Can we get together in a workshop, for lack of better terms, and be aggressive in our, in our, in our desire to what we want to do?
We'd be a part of the workshop.
Yeah.
Who, who said yes?
The workshops, the workshops.
Oh, yeah, it'd be public, it'd be public. Yes, we know that, yeah.
Would you, I would ask you if that's where you want to approach it?
Well, I think we know what you want, and that's cut and dry, and I appreciate that fact. And, and another thing, we have eleven entities that we fund each year, excuse me, ten, three of these have asked for increases. And also lurking in our background is a possible new library. And as a member of the library board, I haven't told you guys yet, they're gonna come knocking on our door here real soon about the funds. Is the library better than animal shelter?
You said they've been, they've been a busy while, but...
I'm not saying I'm not getting anything like that, but we, we, our demands are about eleven thousand dollars more this year than, than last year. So there's a lot of moving parts here, but I want to give you my word that we will get aggressive in coming up with a finale. Is that fair enough?
It's fair enough of what you say you'll do. We're a hostage, we're a hostage to you, we want to work with you.
That's the reason I'm saying, well, I haven't seen the contract, to be honest with you, and it's my fault. It's not his fault, if you're looking at him, it's my fault, I haven't asked him for it. So I, I'll take the fall on that one.
It'll be available, it's available to you.
Yes, sir, I'll get it before I leave here.
You also tell him that we get asked for a couple...
He has told me that.
That we made.
Yes, sir.
And the amount they're asking for will be the least you will have paid in the last number of years on a month, on a year basis. So it's a bargain from a comparative standpoint. Mr. Brandon, I'd like to say, thank you to you and the people from the animal shelter, whatever reason you're here, you're A and A or whatever, because I know there's a lot of hard work's going on, I've been out there, I've seen what's going on, I've seen, and there's nobody here that I think wants to mistreat dogs or tell me don't love dogs and stuff like that. They just, a lot of times, we hear two different tales, and I know that y'all have worked on some agreements that what we talk about, I know that for a fact. Sometimes things get changed around, they'll say one thing and it does another, you know, I've, I've been in meetings and say it one time, then somebody else come back and contradicts what's been said. It's been done, yes. I didn't say you, I said it's been, no, I didn't say you, no. But anyway, I see both sides of it. I see people talking about, you know, paying city and county tax, going for it, I see what you all are doing, I hear tales about a lot of things, but maybe we sit down and, and try to work something out. I'm, I'm not against it, I'm just, the amount of money is what... Well, actually, currently, what we're proposing will be the best financial deal that the city and the county has had in the last number of years. So we know how to run the shelter, it'll be under our control, it'll be run correctly, and we can do it for a lesser amount, that's what we're talking to y'all about, a lesser amount than y'all have paid in the years past. So, get busy, take advantage, it's a good bargain.
Thank you, sir.
I just, I revamped all the heating.
Who are you, sir? I'm sorry. Okay, thank you, sir. I just want people to...
I revamped all the heating, I've taken the heat bill from twenty-three hundred dollars a month down to about seven.
Twenty-three hundred down to seven?
Yeah, it didn't have a heat pump prior. It was actually, just had a new one put in, thanks to Mr. Brandon, Mr. Brandon bought a brand-new four-ton heat pump, put in there, we were running on sixty amps of electric only to heat the facility.
I've been out there and seen what you've done, I know you've done a lot of work, I've been there.
This one was just put in, just heat pump. And then we add propane to cut the electric down even farther, so we're now using propane to dry all of clothes, anything, the whole facility, and it's using everything we can to lower the bills so, like Mr. Fancher said previously, he would like to say if we did start at a hundred thousand, we could possibly within a year or so, lower that amount.
Well, we will, we're gonna make our facility available to the city and the county, and I can promise you, it will be run very, very properly, we have control over that now. So...
Can I ask why you have control over it now and not in the past?
Because the city ran the shelter.
We didn't have any authority to come in either to the citizens. We, we didn't really even, maybe our department weren't aware of how bad it was. Like, for instance, when we went up in the attic and underneath the, the air conditioning unit, there was a drip that was really probably easy to fix. Well, no, we didn't go up in the attic, we didn't know about it, there was a huge tub, one of these, the tubs are about four foot by two foot, water was all up to the top and it had overflowed because the wood all around was rotten. And, and the ceilings above the, the shelter were all dripping down and there was mold and we had to replace ceilings. And simply because nobody told us that there was a drip that would have been fixed very easily.
Is that the findings that you saw when you inspected the property?
There was, there was, the, the situation you're talking about, it was there. It was where that a, and this is what I was told, because that was installed before I come along. But it's my understanding that that was someone at Mr. Brandon hired to put that unit in, it was installed improperly. You could see the roof, but the friends were at the shelter routinely, and they could see the same things we see after. So to say they didn't have access is not accurate. They were in the shelter all the time. Now, they did, they may not have went up into the attic, I don't know about that. But as far as seeing the roof and seeing the wet spot on the roof and that kind of thing, we thought that all the wet stuff that was coming down was because, we had all the discussions about the condensation on the tin roof, to where that the insulation was not put under the tin roof, and condensation was building up on the roof and it was leaking down. So anytime we saw stuff on the roof, we just, we thought it was a part of that, because that was an ongoing problem that was continuous, and that was just a, that was a construction flaw from when the buildings were, were built.
If anybody gone upstairs and they saw that they had to put a big tub there, certainly we'd have a repairman come out and stop the drip.
Well, let me take one here, man. We had, we had no input to run the shelter at all.
Okay.
Now, we do now, we've always owned the shelter, but we were running properly, I put for that money I had to to get you help.
That's another thing, when you look at the big picture from years past, how in the world could, you all, you all own the facility and we're supposed to be doing all the work?
Y'all landed with...
I know.
Because we gave it to you.
The lease that was involved, the one dollar a year lease, okay.
Right, I mean, that was part of the wonderful thing, that we gave it to the city and, and you only needed to take care of it.
Mr. Brandon, would you be, are you, were you happy with what we're saying, we'll aggressively get together?
I think I'm happy as can be, I would like you to go and sign the contract, let's get on with it.
No, that's not gonna happen tonight.
But now, the amount that we're asking you now is much less than you paid in the years past. So it's a bargain from that standpoint.
It's a much better facility.
Um, yes, sir, thank you.
So if that be the case, I hope that y'all see the value, so if you'll let us know when you have your workshop, I think the city and county's gonna do the same thing.
Have a workshop?
No, they, they're paying.
They're going to do what, Thursday night?
General committee.
General, okay.
Look, if you could have a meeting with the county and the city and the Friends all together?
Well, we requested those meetings, and...
I think that'd be the best, get us all...
And it'll get us all in one room.
Could you do that?
I wouldn't mind. I wouldn't mind.
We, to rehash, go on citynewport.com and review the fact that we've asked for that meeting to occur two or three times.
Then we should work with the county and try to get them to agree to this.
And, yes, I mean, and I know they want, they want a closure to this as well.
I understand that they're ready to do it now, because you never know, man.
Well...
Thank you for your tip.
Thank you, ma'am.
Lisa, you got anything to say? Lisa, you okay?
Thank you, Mr. Brandon.
I just asked if she had any questions.
I think if the state can put down the agenda next month, we'll make a decision. One way or the other.
Of the...
I should speak with you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Mr. Brandon.
Thank you. I wasn't expecting to speak or anything. I just made an observation while you guys were having your conversation. You said that it was going to be how much for your city shelter this year, projected?
$181,000. $181,000, yes, ma'am.
$181,000.
Yes, ma'am.
I thought that you said $148,000.
No, $181,000, sorry.
So, I'm not a huge math whiz. If the county was to give $100,000 to the, and I'm not with the animal shelter or anything, I just made an observation in the audience. If the county was to give $100,000, the CLB would approve $100,000 if they would approve $100,000 for the Friends, the animal shelter, to run a shelter. And I'm gathering that the animal shelter was more or less saying that if the city was to give the $100,000, then there would really be no need for a city shelter to...
Well, that's not exactly correct.
Well, hang on just a second, please.
Okay. But you're going to, you're going to compare apples and oranges.
Okay. And I don't mind, and I, please don't interrupt me, Mr. Brandon or anybody else in the audience, because I'm just trying to get through.
Go ahead, ma'am.
But I think that, I thought that that's what they were kind of feeling as an audience member, and if that is not correct, I'm sorry. But if, say that the city was able to dissolve their animal shelter, and I don't know, maybe keep on the city animal control person to do city animal...
You have to. You have to help that, and that's the most of your expense.
Yes, yes, sir. And then your county animal control, because county pays for animal control as well, which your city would still have your animal control expense, it wouldn't be part of that $100,000. What is your animal control expense? Is it in with your $181,000 for your...
Yes. And that counts your vehicles, your fuel, your insurance, your salaries. I don't have a breakdown on exactly, but that's the majority of the cost is animal control. So you're, you've still got, even if you close the...
Don't interrupt him. I'm just asking.
Well, I'm trying to answer your question. You're asking questions, and I'm trying to answer it, and then you're telling me to hush.
Well, no, I was actually asking Ms. Ann to hush so I could hear you.
So, I mean...
I mean, do you, are you thinking that it's $81,000 or $100,000? What are you thinking that your, the expense for animal control is? I would think that you guys would know, because usually, isn't it through, I mean, I know counties through the sheriff's department, correct?
No.
No.
The county, the county doesn't do their animal control through the mayor?
No.
Okay. Okay. But if, if it's $81,000, and they're asking $100,000, and you get to dissolve, you would think that you would save. I mean, that was just my observation. They're only asking 81, they're only asking $100,000, and you're paying $181,000. I would think that it would save you $81,000, because you wouldn't have to staff that, and you'd still have to pay your animal control. So going into your workshop, if you guys would just think about that. And that was just an observation.
Can I ask your name?
Angie Chandler.
All right. Can you live in the city?
I live in the county.
Okay.
I work in the city.
Work for Red Green?
Mm-hmm. And then I also, my son goes to daycare up on 10th Street. So I'm in the city. I just made an observation, and then, and I'm not a numbers person, so...
We would work with you, try to make all...
Good luck, is all I've got to say, and I hope you guys, you know, everybody tries to work things out.
Thanks, Angie. That's good. Thank you.
Just one more thing.
Lisa, you got anything?
You closed the, the, the city. How much would that save you?
Haven't, don't know what it was yet.
Well, can you break that down as to how much money has gone into that facility? And if that were closed, and that money went into...
I'll have, we'll have that conversation with the lady with the pencil, trust me.
You basically pay animal control, Lisa, and a helper if necessary.
Yes, sir.
And that, and maybe one vehicle. Well, we would work with you so we could help you get rid of all those restrictions.
Yes, sir.
We would work with you to do that.
Appreciate the work you do.
We're going to try to make it work.
It's tough for us, too. I appreciate you. Is there anything else? Anybody else got anything to say?
I do, one, I have one thing. Maurice, I saw the log of the number of arrests and the case overload that you guys do. These numbers are staggering, especially with the arrests and the drugs. I, I don't envy your position.
We've got a hard working crew right now that are very proficient at searching for drugs and making drug arrests.
Those numbers are staggering, dude. Scary, scary staggering.
Thank you. Anybody else got any comment? I hear the most, we adjourn the meeting.
I'll make a motion.
Steve made the most. I hear a second.
Second.
The most and second. Home favor, say aye.
Aye.